Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our regular city council meeting, October the 3rd, 2023, 7:23. Can we please all stand for the pledge of allegiance? If we can all please remain standing for a moment of silence for our first responders and military members. Thank you. May be seated. Roll call, please.
Roll call. Councilmember Roth.
Present.
Councilmember Mann.
Present.
Councilmember Soto.
Present.
Mayor Potem Samra.
Present.
Mayor Moran.
Present.
For the record, all councilmembers are in attendance.
What is that sound?
I hear it here.
We hear it.
Up there?
Yeah. One, two, three. Still got there.
It took me a while, but I figured it out. All right. Close session announcements, Ligo.
No reportable action at this time, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Council, are there any changes to the agenda? Seeing none, we're moving forward. Citizen comments. This section of the agenda allows members of the public to address the city council on any item not on the agenda and items on the agenda. If you wish to speak on an item on the agenda, please state the item number. Members of the public, when recognized by the mayor, should come forward to the lectern and identify themselves. Comments are normally limited to three minutes in accordance with state open meeting laws. No action will be taken by the city council this evening. Is there any citizen comments on the phone?
Yes.
Can you please state your name for the record?
My name is Peter.
Go ahead, please.
Yes, I'm commenting on the banking issue. I'm not sure what the number is because I don't have the agenda in front of me, but I think it's a holdover from the last meeting. Staff has recommended that you bank, continue your bank relationship with F and M Bank. That seems very reasonable. Their costs are among the lowest, next along with Bank of the, along with Bank of the West. West America requires a very high minimum balance and loss of earnings, and it's not in the best interest of the city or its citizens. At this point in time, I feel no, I see no reason to change your relationship with F and M Bank. It's a highly rated bank with an outstanding ranking, much more than West America banks. You rely on staff for their expertise to make recommendations, and I would suggest that you take their recommendation. As far as, I'm getting a little echo here, as far as banking for the citizens, I understand that West America has a branch there. That should not be the sole reason for your decision. I understand that F and M Bank has not put a branch there, but the days of brick and mortar branches are long gone. People should look to alternatives which are in their best interest. I would also suggest that for your citizens, you look at a relationship with a local credit union. Their charges on loans are better than banks, as are their deposit rates are better. Thank you for your time. Again, I recommend that you go with the staff recommendation. You hire staff for their expertise and their nonpartisanship. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. So currently, for citizen comments, you may speak to an item not on the agenda or to an item currently on the agenda, but I can provide a recommendation or a suggestion that if you are speaking in regards to the item on the agenda, you can choose to wait. If it's an item regarding to the bank, banking services, you can wait until the item comes up, or you can, you can ideally-
Well, I'm done. You said an item on the agenda or not on the agenda?
Yes.
So I am done, and I need to leave. Thank you for your time. Bye-bye.
Thank you. Thank you. Yes, so that's why I'm trying to clarify that you can speak now, even the item is coming up, but ideally to be able to have a, a, a complete conversation of the item, you may choose to wait until that item comes up, but it's up to you. It's your, it's your option. Is there any more citizen comments at this time? Please come up to the podium, to the lectern, please. Thank you. Can you please state your name?
Hi, my name is Modesto Enriquez, and I am a member of the Saint Jude Parish Finance Council. I am here on behalf of Monsignor Reverend Harvey Fonseca. He is unable to be here tonight. He prepared a brief letter addressed to the city council, and he asked me to read this to you. This is in regard to item five of your agenda, the resolution calling for the approval of the contract with F and M Banking, Bank for Banking Services. And so here is the letter from Monsignor Fonseca. Livingston City Council, I would like to speak on behalf of keeping our city funds locally in our hometown of Livingston and in Merced County. As a close-knit community, it only seems logical that we should support each other. As locally elected officials, I would encourage you to see this as a way to support your constituents and as an opportunity to work toward the betterment of our city. And finally, I would like to thank each of you for making Livingston such a great place to live. Best regards, Father Harvey, Rector, Shrine of Saint Jude Thaddeus, Livingston, California. And I would like to give, excuse me, I would like to give this to you for your records. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any additional citizen comments at this time on the phone? Anybody else in the chamber? Okay, thank you. Seeing none, we're moving forward. Awards and presentations and proclamations. Presentation by Mayor Moran, proclamation recognizing Hispanic Heritage Month, and it reads, City of Livingston, proclamation, whereas National Historic, I'm sorry, National Hispanic Heritage Month, known as Mesa Herencia Hispana, is celebrated nationwide from September the 15th through October the 15th each year. And whereas Hispanic people represent a vibrant and thriving part of the diverse community that makes up the face of the city of Livingston, their histories and cultures stretch across centuries, and the contributions of those who are from Latin American countries and come to our shores today in search of their dreams continue to add new chapters in our city's story. And whereas the purpose of Hispanic Heritage Month is to create awareness of the contributions of people, of Hispanic people's heritage to American society, and recognize the civil rights leaders, community organizers, politicians, teachers, journalists, first responders, artists, healthcare professionals, athletes, inventors, and other important areas. And whereas Hispanics throughout the nation, because of their energetic commitment to hard work and determination to participate fully in the American dream, provides strength and inspiration to us all, and continue to meet their challenges and responsibilities with dignity and creative spirit. And whereas the city of Livingston acknowledges the Hispanic heritage and the undeniable place it holds in the heart and soul of our nation, a National Hispanic Heritage Month reminds us that the American identity is a fabric of diverse traditions and stories woven together. Now, therefore, I, Jose E. Moran, by virtue of the authority vested, vested in me as mayor of the city of Livingston, California, do hereby proclaim September 15th through October 15th as Hispanic Heritage Month. Thank you. Next, we have announcements and reports. Do we have any city staff announcements and reports?
No staff announcements today, Mayor.
Okay, city manager announcements?
Looks like Anthony has something here, Mayor.
Okay, sure.
Good evening, council, city manager, members of the public. I just wanted to quickly share about the event that Public Works will be hosting. Our residents should be receiving, if they haven't received yet, a flyer and their utility billing in regards to our green waste event. Location of the green waste event will be at our wastewater treatment facility located at 14960 Vinewood. It'll be two back-to-back Saturdays, November 11th and November 18th. Within the flyer are a list of accepted items and unacceptable items. I just wanted to share that, and I gave everybody a flyer copy. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have-
Nothing for me tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have city council members' announcements and reports. Councilmember Mann?
Thank you, Mayor. Nothing to report out tonight, but I did want to apologize to everybody in attendance today for our tardiness and for the fact that our close session went a little over tape, but thank you all for being here. Nothing else. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Councilmember Roth?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Over the weekend, we had our Sweet Potato Festival. Looks to me we had a great turnout. Looks like a lot of people enjoyed it. Food was great. Entertainment was great. So I just, I see Jackie's not here or Tony, but they did a wonderful job as always. Thank you.
Thank you. Council, Councilmember Soto?
Thank you. I believe one of the highlights of this past month was that I did attend the annual conference with the League of Cities in Sacramento. I came back with a greater perspective on some of the items. I do want to recognize that our very own interim city manager, Christopher Lopez, did give a presentation. It was very well attended, and I was really proud to say that, hey, this is our Livingston city manager. He did a really great job informing the attendees on some very critical issues that every city faces. I believe many of the presentations that were there, Livingston isn't alone. Elected officials, everybody that holds a vested interest in their communities, we're all up there, and I'm glad to see, and I was proud to even be a part of attending and voicing and meeting with others with similar challenges and solutions. So building those kinds of connections is very helpful. His presentation was on, I don't want to steal your, oh, but you're not giving a report, but he did have some very good information. Many questions were asked about what happens at city council meetings, public comments. So it was very good, well-attended. I did make connections with very strong leadership, and it doesn't end there. So it was a really good conference. I do have some information. I'm not going to use this whole time, even though it's a time for me to do that, but it was a good experience going there. I believe that would be it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Potem. Samra?
Thank you. I just want to say that the Sweet Potato Festival was a great success, really, really good turnout. I'd like to thank the police department. They did an excellent job. Public Works, those guys who were there, as always, just making sure that citizens can have their event and not have to worry about things and recreation. Bless their heart every time, you know, they're always there for three days, and it was a team effort from the city, and I think it showed what the residents got out of the event. Excellent, as always. Thank you, guys, and everybody. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, one more.
Yes, go ahead.
Just so that I'm transparent, I did meet with the city manager, and I can see his face. Miguel, thank you so much. Miguel, last week, and we talked about some of the general plan status updates, so I just do want people to know that I do meet with staff, but they are meetings that are set up. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. I didn't have too many things going on this last two weeks, other than school three times a week in the evenings unless somebody's interested in helping me with homework. But so in the month of September, there was no MCAG meeting until this coming month in October, and I, a couple of weeks ago, I was invited by Grace Home. They had a table decorating contest, which was really competitive. There were, I think there were like 20 different tables, and there were, I was invited as a judge. It was the first time that they do this, and it was very fun, but other than spending time with people in the community, food there is always great. But thank you to Grace Home for inviting me to the, to be a judge at the table decorating contest. And the, the previous week, Fiesta Patrias was also celebrated in the city of Fresno, and I was invited to participate in the parade and other activities representing the city of Livingston. I was supposed to be there for, I was planning to be there for about an hour, an hour and a half, ended up staying there for about six hours. It was that much fun, and obviously the food, you know, a lot of, a lot of great food and a lot of great people. And this weekend, we had, as others in the council mentioned, that we had our Sweet Potato Festival for three days. You know, Friday was completely focused on youth. There was another, again, for the second year in a row, they had the skateboarding little area. It was well-attended, and it's always very well-liked, and a lot of other different activities. So thank you to the recreation department and all of the volunteers. I, I wasn't sure which day they had me working there, but I ended up working there all three days. So they volunteered me to be there, but I enjoyed it. It was fun, but after a while, I think by Sunday, 8 o'clock, I wanted to come back home, but, you know, Jackie did not let me go home early. So, but it was great. It was just, weather was, weather was perfect. So other than that, it's, I believe that is it for now.
We're going to move, move on with consent agenda. What is your desire with the consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I made the motion to approve the consent agenda.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
So we have a first and a second.
Roll call. Councilmember Roth?
Yes.
Councilmember Mann?
Yes.
Councilmember Soto?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Samra?
Yes.
Mayor Moran?
Yes.
Motion approved by a vote of 5-0.
Thank you. Next, we have discussion and potential action items. Item number five, resolution approving a contract with F and M Bank for banking services or alternative council direction.
Mayor?
Yes.
Before Happy gets started, I wanted to say a few things about this item. First off, really just wanted to thank the staff for all the work that they've done with this. Happy, Brad, as well as Catherine. I know she isn't staff, but she was involved in the process. I also appreciate the time and effort that the banks provided in providing their proposals. I know it's not easy doing these, providing proposals, so I appreciate the time that they took to provide those to, to staff. One thing that I do want to make sure that we get on the record is that we didn't have any existing issues with the existing bank. From the staff perspective, F and M Bank has done an incredible job in working with the city, and so we didn't, staff didn't have any issues with F and M Bank. Now, with that being said, it's completely up to the council's direction and desire to provide direction and to have staff look at items as they see fit. So I did want to make sure that although we didn't have any issues, it's absolute council's prerogative to provide direction to staff to, you know, go out to RFP, should the council desire that. One thing that wasn't mentioned this in the staff report or wasn't brought up in the previous discussion is that in the process of identifying the goals of the department, this item essentially just rises to the very top of the priority goals of the city council as it relates to the finance department. With that being said, we're delayed on the last two years' audits, a multitude of other things that are going on that are delayed in the finance department, a change-up, and not saying that the council shouldn't change, but this really elevates this item to the very forefront of the items in the finance department. So from a management perspective and managing the time, the resources that we have in the finance department, transitioning, developing RFPs does take away time from the other work that the staff needs to do, and I wanted to make sure that I put that on there. In addition to that, any transition away from the existing bank does require time, anywhere from on the very expedited timeframe of just, you know, four weeks all the way out to maybe 12 weeks or so to transition all of those things. Changing vendor information, transferring that, a whole host of information, employee information, all of that stuff takes time. And so transitioning away from another, to a new bank, would essentially mean that all the other items that we are working on, the audits, the other things that are backlog, that does get put on the back burner. I wanted to start off that conversation by just being transparent and providing that information to the council as well as the public, because, you know, these things do end up being the priority item, and it's the complete prerogative of the council to do so, but I wanted to make sure that everybody knew that. So with that said, Happy, you want to go ahead and cue up the presentation?
Yes.
Before we, before we go on, I didn't want to interrupt Mr. Lopez, but I will be once again recusing myself from this item, sir. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, city staff and public that are in attendance and those that are watching on YouTube. The banking services resolution approving a contract with F and M Bank for banking services or alternative council direction. So to give a background on the current banking services provider, we have F and M Bank. We've had them since August of 2019, and as our city manager mentioned, city staff has had no issues with F and M Bank since we started banking with them. F and M Bank has provided amazing customer service to city staff when needed. Their employees have gone above and beyond for the finance team when needed as well. At the May 2nd, 2020 meeting, city council directed staff to cancel the agreement with F and M Bank and go out for an RFP. The request for proposals, the RFP was posted May 18th, 2023, on the city website. The RFP was also sent to Bank of the West, F and M Bank, JP Morgan, PNC Bank, US Bank, Wells Fargo Bank, and West America Bank. We got three responses. We're from Bank of the West, F and M Bank, and West America Bank. The RFP evaluators and interview people that were involved in the RFP and the interview were Catherine Shaw Rodriguez, which is our elected city treasurer, myself as a senior accountant, and Brad Graham, which is in the finance department. Banks that responded were interviewed at the, at City Hall on July 20th of 2023. Results of the interview and a review of the written responses was done at City Hall on July 26th of 2023 by the three of us. We had nine evaluations that we chose or we kind of graded on the criteria. Conformity to RFP specifications, responsiveness to RFP, comprehensiveness of services provided, related experience, account analysis, conversion plan, charges for services, service enhancements, and other factors were in the interview. So this slide basically goes over the main item that was being discussed on the, out of the nine criterias, which kind of factored us to go with F and M Bank on the chosen bank. So if you just kind of look at the whole pricing guarantee, in our RFP, the directions was requesting a price guarantee for five years, and West America Bank didn't follow those guidelines or instructions and gave us a three-year price minimum guarantee. I guess the average minimum deposit required, Bank of the West and F and M Bank have no requirements, while West America Bank gave us a $2 million average minimum deposit requirement. Earnings credit rate, Bank of the West, 1.5, which they also said it was a, I guess, a variable rate, meaning right now it could 1.5, tomorrow it could be a little less, it could be higher, depending on what the market is, is what they are going to give us for the earning rate. F and M Bank is guaranteeing it for the five years of .55, and then West America Bank became the lowest at .30. So based on the average minimum, average minimum deposit requirement, charges were based on the April 2023 activity. So Bank of the West would charge us $806.43 a month. F and M Bank would be charged us $947, and then West America came up at the highest as So our interest, so basically based on the earnings credit, again, back to what we invested with LEAF, we'd have no, basically, loss of funds with Bank of the West or with F and M Bank, because they have no minimum requirement. So with the West America Bank with us having a minimum requirement of $2 million in their bank to offset our earnings rate credit, the city would lose around $76,600 annually for having a minimum of $2 million in the bank here at, with West America, then putting it into LEAF. So if we do the math on the 70, 72, around 73,000 times by five years, that's almost $363,000, $370,000 that the city is going to lose over the five-year term. that the city is going to lose over the five-year term. So the results and recommendations, results using the evaluation criteria, F and M Bank scored the highest. Staff recommends city council approve a resolution approving a contract with F and M Bank for banking services. I'd be happy to answer any questions if needed. We do have both banks present if you guys have any question for the banking banks as well.
Mr. Lopez?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Happy, for providing the background on that. Over the weekend, I think it was the weekend, there were some questions that were being proposed or asked of staff, and I wanted to make sure that the public had the responses as well. I did provide a copy of these questions and answers of the council. The council did, council members did ask for a copy of the banking services RFP, which we provided to the council. That RFP is still available online as well, so if anybody would like to see it, it's still available online. There was a question about whether the proposals specifically responded to the criteria in the RFP, and as Happy pointed out, at least for the pricing guarantee, there was, I think it was West America Bank did provide for three years, the others provided for five as specified in the RFP. There was a question of why the city previously went away or why the city chose to contract with F and M Bank for banking services. While some of the staff wasn't involved in those management discussions, there were some operational things that had happened, which I did provide to the council in terms of some activity and some concerns that staff had, which the council has in their email. In addition to that, there was a question about when the current agreement was scheduled to expire, and that was set to expire in 2024, towards the tail end of 2024. There was another question of whether the three banks that responded, whether they were involved in the interviews. Yes, all three banks that provided proposals were a part of the interview process. There was a question about F and M Bank having a lower earning credit rate and higher charges based on April 20, was it 23 or 22 activity? 2023 activity. What does that mean in simpler language? The earning credit rate, ECR, is the interest rate that is calculated by banks on non-interesting, non-interest-bearing accounts. For example, our personal regular checking accounts don't earn interest, but with the city, our checking accounts earn interest. The amount of the interest that we would have earned for that month is used to offset our monthly fees with the bank. So for instance, if we kept $1 million in the bank for a particular month and we received $400 in credits, that amount would be used to offset our monthly fees. If your monthly fees were 1,000, then we would subtract 400 and pay 600 in bank fees. In addition to that, there are other, there are ratings for Bank of the, are there ratings of Bank of the West available in the staff report. It only references the other two banks. While we included that information, it was purely because of the conversation from the last meeting, that information was not part of the RFP. We provided that as additional information for the council as well as the public. And then one, an additional question was whether, what was the order in which the banks came in? On the criteria that Happy provided, Bank of the West was actually the third in the list of the scoring. And then there was another question, which I'm happy Happy had the table included there. There was a question, based on the earnings credit rate, the city would earn more interest based on the 1.5 percentage rate provided by Bank of the West. Yes, if we look just at the earning credit rate, then Bank of the West was the highest with 1.5%. One detail related to that is that the 1.5% that they quoted is a floating rate, meanings that, meaning that the rate changes periodically, so it's not necessarily set in stone. It can fluctuate and it can change. So for that reason, the staff or the committee did grade that score accordingly based on the other proposals that were provided. I think that's all the questions that came up over the weekend. Happy is here to answer any other questions, should the council have any. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Council, do you guys have any questions before I go out to, for public comment? Okay, so I'll go out to public comment and you can probably stay there, that way you don't go nowhere. But some additional feedback, you know, I did ask, actually, I, there was one of the questions or some of the questions that I did ask, you know, because Bank of the West, if I remember correctly, I think it was back 2018, 2019, when there was a transition to F and M, I believe it was back then. So I do remember that vaguely, that meeting, but I don't remember all of the details without going back into, into the minutes or to that meeting at that time, but I do remember there was later on in some of the things that came up when I asked is what were some of the concerns back then? There was a few things, for instance, there was a, a one time the city had a situation where one check was, was cashed for $90,000, and, and so there was a concern at that time there wasn't enough things being done that were in place to prevent that from happening. And at that time, I believe, and based on information, it was that, it wasn't until Livingston Police Department got involved, and there was a report for fraud, and it was investigated, that it was until after that that the city got the money back. And then also, I remember somewhere around 17, 18, 19, there was a question, a request to the bank to allow the city to create a mural on their wall, and at that time, I don't know what the reason was, but it wasn't allowed at that time. So, you know, so it's just, and I think just to be fair, it's just, it's just because I, this, and I'm glad that people have been asking a lot of questions, and I think that it's, it's, I always like to give people the reason, explain the why behind, you know, what are some of the same things that we're considering so that, you know, people understand and have the same information as we do. So, so at this time, I'm going to go out for public comment in regards to this item. Is there any public comment on the phone?
Yes, Catherine Shell Rodriguez.
Go ahead, please. I have three minutes.
Greetings, everyone. My purpose is not to try to encourage the council to vote one way or the other, but to offer a few observations and stress the urgency and need to make a timely decision. Members of the council, when you voted to rescind the contract from our current bank, you started the timer ticking on a potential financial time bomb if a decision on banking services could not be made in a timely manner. You either understood that at the time, or you did not. As part of the September 28th, 2023 special meeting agenda packet, you all received information from a memo from the internal, from the interim city manager. You either read it, or you did not. As part of the agenda packet for this city council meeting, you received a staff report. Again, you either read it, or you did not. If you did read it, you either believe it and have faith in your interim finance director, senior accountant, and interim city manager, or you do not. According to the staff report, we need to have banking services in place by November 11th, or there will be serious financial consequences to deal with. Consequences up to and including losing the ability to pay the bills and to continue functioning as a city without the state assigning a receiver for Livingston money. It is my understanding that it would take four to eight weeks at least to transition from one bank to another. That doesn't give us much time between then and now. If my understanding is correct or not, it still implies having to spend quite a bit of staff time on the transition. One more thing, the staff report talks about over $72,000 in lost interest because you would have to meet a $2 million minimum deposit requirement, depending upon the decision you choose to make, of course. Either way, you believe the information and calculations provided to you by your financial staff and your interim city manager, or you do not. Either way, the clock is ticking, and the time for making a decision is almost up.
Thank you. Is there anybody else on the phone? Public comment in regards to item number five? Okay, here in none, I'm coming back into the chamber. Is there any public comment in regards to this item? Either way, so if, but-
Mr. Mayor, I prefer that the banks wait in case we have questions.
Go ahead. Thank you.
Brandon Freezin, Livingston True Value, resident. It's off. Okay, it's on. You can't hear me. It's getting older, Paul. I have a few questions as far as to address the information that's provided. If it's pure and simple, what it shows, it's an easy decision. I have a couple of questions about just banking. How much money does the city keep on hand in both banks? I mean, in bank that is right now, F and M. Are they, I mean, and you can answer this as far as what it looks like is that you don't keep any money in F and M, and so they have a none as far as requirement, which is interesting, is that if you only deposit checks to them and you wrote checks out of them, there would be some problems with that. And so there is money being held in both LAVCO and, or late in both banks. And so to give an honest assessment of a loss of $72,000 a year in revenue, I think is disingenuous because you do keep money in both places. I don't know what the total amount that is. As far as being a local business in town, I would speak highly of a rubric that would suggest that having a business in town takes precedence. I see that there's, I don't know if there's services as far as bank transfers, as far as money going to the other city, being able to walk across the street. There is nothing as far as staff time that shows or expenses that it takes to do banking outside the city. Being in Merced County, this is a brick and mortar place, and I think somebody said that they're going wayside. I make a walk two blocks every day to a brick and mortar place because I have to take cash. And so having a place in town is important. There are some questions as far as I hope that are addressed, and I would like to remain to come back and ask more questions. It seems like there's been, this has been laid out a certain way, and there's other questions as a council that I hope that you would ask as far as not just what is presented. So, thanks.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment?
Hey, my name is Subjeet. I'm 21. I'm from Livingston. I work at the highest score now, tutoring and advising also coach football there. I wanted to make some comments about the bank resolution, but I wanted to hear what the banks have to say first, to hear some of the numbers that they have or whatever perspective they have. Would I still be able to talk after they're done?
So what I can consider, I don't know what the council, what's-
I don't have a problem with that.
So I would assume probably it's like 30 seconds that you used already, and then I'll leave the remaining 2:30.
We didn't clock it, but-
I'm counting, but, but-
Yeah, that works.
Yeah.
All right, I appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, thanks. All right. Any other citizen comments? Okay, so at this time, I, Mayor Potem, do you want?
Mr. Mayor, just a refresher, if it's okay with the council, I'd like to have the both financial institutions in consideration, give another update, and maybe perhaps if we have questions for each of them, we can ask at that time.
Sure.
Please, thank you.
Is that okay?
All right, yes. Anybody from the, either one of the agencies?
You have the, you have the current bank. You go first, sir.
And you are the one who's bringing it to the business.
Okay, folks, in alphabetical order, please. No, alphabetical order, please. F and M, F and M, come on up.
Again, there we go. Gary Erickson, F and M Bank. Again, I'd like to just, as we did a couple of weeks ago, just thank the council staff for the opportunity to provide banking services the last couple of weeks that we've been talking about this, but for last, last four years. And so thank you for that opportunity. Sweet Potato Festival is a big talking point earlier. Congratulations for that. F and M Bank is happy to be one of your big sponsors of that again this year, and thanks for a great event for your community. One thing that I've noticed is community investment has come up, and so I just wanted to address that rather than replow the same field that maybe talked about two weeks ago. Community investment, if I may. F and M's investment in Livingston and its citizens, there was comments made that F and M doesn't have a bank in town. That is correct, yes. Don't have a brick and mortar here in town. What is, how is F and M investing in the citizens of Livingston? You know, Livingston does a great job. I want to talk about three of your citizens. Erica Duran gets up in the morning in Livingston, lives in Livingston, works in the banking industry, and for her, the best opportunity was at F and M Bank. And she, she currently serves at our Hillmar. She's our operations supervisor, and she is nails. So F and M Bank investing in one of your citizens. Talk about Jessica, Jessica De La Rosa Ramirez gets up in Livingston, works in the banking industry, finds it is best for her family and young children that she commutes out of Livingston, taking a position with F and M Bank in Hillmar. She actually trained in our Turlock branch. I worked with her personally. She does a bang-up job in Livingston. You ought to be proud of Jessica. Another opportunity for F and M to invest in your citizens. Third one I'd like to talk about, A.J. A.J. Sandy lives, lives here in Livingston, gets up in Livingston, worked for West America Bank, found a better opportunity for himself working for F and M Bank, and I'm sure glad he did because right now he's the number one personal banker in all of F and M Bank. He's doing a bang-up job. He's in our office in Turlock, and I couldn't be prouder. I wish he was here and he didn't walk in, but he's got young boys, and I know his, his sister is running for superior court judge, and so he's supporting her. And so A.J.'s doing a bang-up job, just some of the way F and M is supporting the citizens of Livingston, and you have some great citizens here, great, great people that are working for you. So just three other ways F and M investing in your people and in your community. I could say anything, so I'm going to go and talk about somebody else that rates banks. You've heard about CRA. Happy and the, and the team put some of that information in your council packet. This isn't hearing from F and M. This isn't hearing from West America. This is a third party that does this for every bank in the United States. Today, there's just under 5,000 different banks in the United States. They rate everyone. You can go on to anywhere in the Google, you can do anything. So let's look at West America, how they, how they rate. According to, I got their last 11, 11 reports. 10 of the 11, they were satisfactory. One of them, they were, needs improvement. This goes back over the last 20 years. So their last four in order were satisfactory, satisfactory, needs improvement, and satisfactory. It's West America Bank, you're happy to have it. You're welcome to, welcome to go on, online and see it yourself. CRA, you can print the same sheet off for F and M Bank. Once again, it's not me talking, this is somebody else that rates every bank in the United States. The last 11 reports, how did F and M do? Out of 11, seven of them were outstanding, four of them- Out of 11, seven of them were outstanding, four of them were satisfactory. The last four, outstanding, 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 and outstanding. So here's a third-party representative rates every bank in the United States on community reinvestment. Community reinvestment talks about their investment in the community, their lending, their services that they provide. The last four reports for West America Bank, again, satisfactory, satisfactory, needs improvement, satisfactory. Last four reports for F and M Bank, outstanding, 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 and outstanding. I'd like to close my comments with this, if I, if I may, counsel. I don't know, I don't know if there's a, there's three minutes on the clock, but there's still three minutes on the clock. So my last thing that, about community investment, I, I guess I would say, I've worked for F and M Bank for 20 years, pretty proud of what we do there. They'll, will loan on anything. Home equity loan, commercial, industrial, ag, ranchette loans. We should ask the other competing banks, do they have a full line of services? Somebody comes in with a 10 acres and a home on it, would they make them a loan on it? Customer comes in and wants a home equity line of credit, but they already have a first that they got three or four years ago at a great rate. Are all the banks gonna allow them and do a second on that home? Or are they gonna say, no, you have to refinance now when rates are very, very high? F and M Bank has all those products. We do them every day. Community investment, loan to deposit ratio, last, last printout, if you're sick of me getting printouts, I went on West America Bank's webpage. I'd like to read to you their second bullet point. West America Bank boasts of a 15% loan to deposit ratio. A loan to deposit ratio is just that. If, in banking, if I have $100 of deposits, if I have a 15% loan to deposit ratio, that means of those $100 that I've taken in in loans, I'm gonna loan out 15 of those dollars. And so that's, that is West America, that's their, their own, March 20th of 2023, it says. And so that's, they're loaning out $15 for every 100. Okay, let's compare that to F and M, compare and contrasting. The average bank, more or less, you guys, you would know this just as well as I, is about $65 is the average bank, does about 60. F and M Bank today, or last Friday, I get it every, every Friday, F and M Bank's loan to deposit ratio, about 75%. So that means 70, of every $100 that we take in, we invest in loans back into the community, businesses, homeowners, ranchettes, 75 of those dollars. $75 versus 15, F and M Bank is making, as a percentage of our deposits, making five times the investment in the local communities. Okay? But wait, F and M Bank, I get it, we don't have a, a bank in town. I understand that. So I said, we don't have a bank in town, but, but like somebody else says, maybe you don't need a bank in town everywhere. Happy has done a nice job of banking with us the last four years. I don't think he's worn out too many shoes running up and down 99 to get to us. There must be another way that he's getting deposits to us. I'll let him address that, should you choose to investigate that further. But how many dollars do, you know, you can ask Wes, I'm, I'm sure Charlie can tell us how many loans he has across the street. FDIC says he has deposits of about $91 million. If he's 15%, that means he's got about $13 million invested, if he's average for his bank. I don't know if he's average, there's 76 branches, he is only one. But I would like to talk about just three branches of F and M to compare and contrast. I'm not, I don't have 76 branches to talk about, you don't have 76 branches to listen to all the data from. I'd like to talk about three, the three that are closest to you in the city of Livingston. Those three for F and M Bank would be located on G Street in Merced, they'd be located on First Street in Hillmar, and they'd be located on Center Street in Turlock. Those three branches, I'm very well aware of as the market manager for that area and what goes on. Well, if I take West America Bank and their 15% loan to deposit ratio, that means in 76 branches that they have, they have about $850 million of loans, 850. Okay, we're gonna put that on that side of the ledger. I'm only gonna talk about three branches because once again, I don't have time to tell you about every branch of F and M. Our loan portfolio is in the billions, like over 3 billion, okay? So according to, who's putting more into the communities? 850? About 3 and 1/4 billion. But let's just talk about those three branches. My three branches, Hillmar, Merced, and Turlock, investment and loans into the local community is over $650 million. In our three branches, we nearly have what the entire West America Bank does in 76 branches. I hope this demonstrates a commitment to lending to the communities that we serve. We welcome any of the citizens of Livingston to our bank. And in fact, I looked up just yesterday morning, how many, how many loans do I have that have an address of Livingston, California? Don't have a branch in town. But if I take 15% of what I know West America Bank has on deposit right here in Livingston, F and M Bank has more dollars lent in Livingston. If they are average for their system at 15%, F and M has more dollars lent in Livingston with no branch here than West America would if I used that 15%. You can ask them how many dollars they have lent into your community. Again, F and M appreciates the opportunity. Any questions you have, do them now, do them later, do them in the parking lot. We'd, happy to, happy to entertain those. But again, thank you for your consideration, and thank you for taking it seriously.
Counsel, questions? Any questions at this time?
I do, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Erickson, thank you very much for eye-opening information, really appreciate it. Just a couple of questions. When was the branch in Hillmar opened?
When was the branch in Hillmar opened? F and M Bank branch in Hillmar? Let me see, there was a bank, let's go back to 1985. 1985, there was a bank?
The current branch that you have there, when was it opened?
Well, it was a different bank.
I understand. But when, when did it become F and M branch?
1985, the same time that F and M Bank came to Turlock.
Okay.
Yeah.
And so, and then, you know my concerns that I posed to you last time?
Yes, sir.
And I have stated to you after the meeting, I'll state it publicly, I believe that F and Bank is a good bank, nothing wrong with the bank. I get it, and I've told you that before. But you said that you were, that the bank, not you personally, but that you made an attempt to open a branch in Livingston, but you could not get what they find a property, correct? Just where did you, other than this, where else did you look for property? And did you file anything with the regulatory agencies that you're opening a branch in Livingston, anywhere? Was there any paperwork ever filed?
Did we file? No, you have to have an address first. You have to, you have to identify a property, you have to have an address first where you're going to. To, to, you can't go to the FDIC and say, it's somewhere in the town. I mean, you, you gotta start with, you, you have to have a location. And so can I point to you a document?
But you, but you pointed that you had drew up plans for a particular building, correct? The last, if I remember correctly?
Well, I'll read exactly what I provided, absolutely.
And, and when you drew up the plans, did you file those papers with anybody?
No, no. So, so two weeks ago, when I talked about the, the building that we drew up plans, okay? We asked to come look at the building at B and Main. Didn't get a call back. We have plans of similar branches. You will see on those emails where our facilities director asked, can I come down? Do I have to come and measure the building to get exact measurements? Or can the, what am I gonna say, the realtor? Will the realtors provide those? The realtor never provided those. And so the mockups that we did of a branch were based on, what's that, public record of how many square feet? You know, you could find out how big my home is, you can, it's public record. We did the same thing with a commercial building, saying, okay, this, this building is 3,500 square feet. Obviously, we don't need that, we don't need a, we need about a third of that. And so that was, that, that is the information that that was based on.
Okay, and then you had also indicated, and correct me if I'm wrong, maybe it's been two weeks, so I, I am getting kind of old, but you also said that the building that you were, that's that old bank over there?
Yeah.
That it was about 3,300, 200 square feet, and you don't normally wanna put a branch that high, it was, it was too large a building for you? Was that, was that accurate in what you said to me when, when I was standing there? That it was because of the size of building that you didn't really wanna go in there?
Well, actually, what I, I was saying there is, we went to the owner, and we told the owner, hey, it is too big, let us put a demising wall in it. We'll put in a second set of bathrooms in here, so you can have us as a tenant on one side, have a second, we will improve your property, put a second set of bathrooms on the other side, so that the second half of the building would be available to generate another lease and be leased out.
But so...
So yes, it is too large, and that was our workaround.
The property owner did get with you, but you just wanted to subdivide the, the building, which they were probably not willing to do. So that was the decision, not that they didn't, they didn't approach you, they did talk to you, you just didn't wanna take the entire building, you wanted to split the building in half, and when they didn't agree to that, that's when you pulled out, correct? It's not like they didn't say...
No, no, that's not correct.
But that's, that's what I understand, that's what you said.
Okay, well, here, let me, let me back up then. Let me, let me back up, let me back up and just read the timeline, because I, I don't wanna give you different information than what I've already provided the council.
Yeah, but you just said right now that you said that, let them divide it in half, and you can, you just said that. So they did make an agreement, they did come to you and say, you know, I'm just...
August, August 15th, 2019, F and M contacts F and M's broker, Anna Winters, to obtain information on the suite available at 1471 B Street in Livingston. August 25th, F and M started working on some plans based on our preliminary understanding, realistically looking for 1,200 to 1,500 square feet for a branch, copy of the, copy of the site plan from, for other similar branches, uh, copy of a site plan for other similar branches that F and M has established, was provided, and that was attachment B to this. Four days later, Winters stated that she was working on an LOI to obtain an actual floor plan for the site. They wouldn't talk to us without an LOI, is what that means. September 11th, 2019, F and M receives the lease brochure from Winters, which is Exhibit C to this. The existing space is 3,550 square feet, which is too big for our needs. F and M Bank asks Winters, again, Winters is F and M's real estate agent, to reach out to the broker, who is the real estate agent for the owner, to see if we can pay to split, split the property with a wall, and the improvements could be offset by rent. The landlord was unwilling to negotiate any part of a split, lease it all, as is or nothing. What is this? 21 days later, Kent Steinworth, chief, the CEO and the president of F and M Bank, the director of banking and the retail banking manager, two are other sites in Livingston. I didn't put that in there, but at the time, it was another one of our great longtime customers, who was your market here, trying to see, hey, can we, can we put it in a market? We've seen branches in markets before, is there any room up in the corners of the market? That was one of the ideas at that point. Couple months later, Winters, F and M's agent again, reaches out again to the broker of record to ask for access to measure the space, but the landlord is traveling. So the landlord still hasn't let us in the building. Now we're in, now we're in December, and we started this in August. Landlord is traveling, the landlord was not willing to negotiate nor to allow the bank measurements, lease it all as is or nothing. Shortly thereafter, we all went into fetal position with COVID, and, oh shoot, we pick it up, picked it up earlier this year, building is still available. Well, they went and talked to us three years ago before COVID, maybe they'll talk to us after COVID. Main and B remains vacant, seek management's approval to contact ownership. This was me, I'm asking my management, hey, let's fire up this again and see if they'll talk to us. Corporate real estate person at the bank, Christie, receives the request that I made. They reached back out to the broker and to, to see if we can get in touch with the landlord to see if the suite is available. Newport called, sent an email to the broker, his name was Twon from KW Commercial, the sign was up there for four years, you guys saw, you guys all saw it plenty, ask if the space is still available. No response from the broker, wouldn't even return a call. As was said by other members a couple of weeks ago, others have said that they were challenged to get in contact with that landowner as well. I don't know if that kind of clears up, you know, who, who contacted who and when, and how much information were we given? Not much.
Thank you very much. I still think that, and I would do the very same thing. Your company, your bank made a decision that leasing the entire building doesn't serve your purpose, is not worth it, and, and they didn't wanna split that, so that's where it came. But there were alternative sites you could have looked at, but I understand, you know, it's, you have to look at how much we get in banking fees, and is it worth, or you know? And, and to us, you know, I still have to hold to what people said, they wanted a, and they still want an alternate bank, and brick and mortar, some people say is no longer, but, but tell that to the people who don't have vehicles, tell it to senior citizens who can't drive, they need to be able to walk up somewhere and get some banking done, withdraw their social security check, or whatever they gotta do, you know? They, they need that, you know? And, and, and to us, to me at least, I think you made a calculated call, and it's probably correct, and I would do the same thing, that it's not worth your expense to open a branch, at least not 3,200 feet, and that was your main call, not because the building wasn't available, it was available, you, they just didn't wanna lease a half of it to you, and you didn't wanna lease the whole building. And that's where the whole thing was at. So, with that, Mr. Mayor, thank you very much.
Thank you, Counsel. Any questions at this time?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, go ahead.
Mr. Anderson, so my understanding is you did have the opportunity to move in there, but you denied it because it was too big for your needs, correct?
They never even let us in to measure the building, sir.
But you still had the opportunity, correct? And hang on...
I mean, we asked to, can we get the measurements of the building? And they wouldn't even give us the measurements to start TIs, you know, you have to, we gotta get a teller line, so. I mean, I mean, maybe they would have, I, I don't know. If they won't even give us measurements, I, I don't, I don't know.
Fair enough. But you said after COVID went away, you tried, but in between this time, the last, less than a year, all those vacant buildings that, that company or person owns filled up. So they were able to get ahold of the owner, and for me, it doesn't sound like you tried hard enough. I mean, if these small little businesses in that same plaza, they're owned by the same owner, they got in contact with the owner of that, that plaza, and they're in there. This is less than a year ago. So...
I don't know, no, no one would answer our call, sir. I, I don't know what to tell you.
Fair enough.
They didn't want another bank in town, or what, but...
Fair enough. And I had another question. If we do decide and vote yes tonight, or no, whatever, yes, are you planning on putting an ATM in here at least, anywhere in the city?
Love to, love to. You got a spot? Somebody asked me if I wanted to put a branch at 511 Main Street over here. It's got 25 feet on the sidewalk and not a single parking spot in front of it. I mean, that's, that's, you know, tough to put a branch there, but I'd love to. If, I'd love to work with the city manager, and, and if you have a spot where, hey, we, we've done that other places, and I don't think that's too much of a reach, providing we could find a spot, somebody to give us measurements.
Thank you.
Counsel, any other questions at this time?
Thank you so much for being here for at least what, the fifth time? Anyways, I, I want to apologize on this lack of, I don't, I don't even know what to call this. I don't, I don't even know what to call this, but um it, it's quite embarrassing and how you're being treated and shamed by some, by you're not trying hard enough. Um, I do realize what the, the, what you have explained with the knowledge that you had at the time that when you came here to serve Livingston, um, there are no complaints with your services. And I do believe that that's what's on the agenda tonight, banking services, not their ability to attain property, that they've already explained how this happened. And during that time as well, I, the businesses there now, I don't even know when those agreements happened or when they came or proposed anything to the city that they were coming in as a supermarket or a grocery store. I mean, I saw pictures of uh our own mayor with a ribbon cutting. I know of other times when there could have been other meetings. So I don't know. Um, and we're going on faith and research because that's what we have to do here on what you've provided for the city of Livingston and what you continue to provide based on the staff report. Um, so I apologize for the way that, that you're being treated here um with uh the constant accusatory thing. You didn't try hard enough. It does sound as you did try and based on things that we know of past, they, they are difficult to, to get ahold of and lucky for the other businesses and good for us that we do have businesses that are occupying those um empty um lots there. But someone is occupying that, so that's in the past. We got to move forward with banking services and that is on the agenda tonight. Um, so thank you for your time once again. Letting the public know what you've done, how you've served us, where money is, is best kept um from, for the city of Livingston and what you do provide for the city of Livingston. So um, I'd like to move forward, but again, I want to also give an opportunity to West America to provide a statement just as you did, to be fair, um, before we, before I uh, thank you for your time.
Good.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Hello.
Oh, I'm not that tall.
I am Stephanie Denberg with West America Bank. Thank you guys again for having us. Um, thank you, Counsel and Mayor. And this is Jeff Alt. He's also with West America Bank. So we'll just take a few minutes of your time. Um, Happy, would you show us the chart real quick? Um, I don't have anything bad to say about F and M. Um, they're a great bank. And I, we know A J very well. He's a great employee. He was great for West America. And I'm, he did fantastic with us and I'm sure he's doing fantastic there. So we're very, very happy for him. Yeah, I know, right? Um, he is, he is an amazing employee and that's awesome that employees go there. You know, we're all banks out here doing the same thing. We might have a little different look at what we do. But specifically, I want to just address a couple of things on here in relation to the R F P. Um, when we did get the R F P, the pricing guarantee stated that they desired five years, but not that it was a requirement to be five years. So we go in at three. That's how our offers go out. And usually they don't change and we had five one-year options in the R F P. So that allowed both parties, if they needed to walk away, they could. So that's why we build it that way. So it's fair to both sides. Um, as far as the average minimum deposit goes, in the R F P, it specifically stated that there was a two point five million average collected balance on deposit and that's what we would be basing our pricing on. So that means if it is an average collected balance, that means that that money is being held in that account for it to maintain an average of that high. So that money has to be there most of the time. Very rarely would it drop below. So that's why we base it off of that. And yes, we're a bank. We're a business, just like everybody else. Nothing's free. And so we do require that balance because that was part of the R F P, that that was going to be maintained, so we included that in our proposal. Um, as far as the earnings credit, yes, that is our earnings credit. We base it off of different calculations and what the market is and we're usually very in line with the market. F and M is definitely higher and that's historically how they are. They are just one of the higher earning credits out there. Um, as far as the charges based on April activity, those would be the charges prior to the earnings credit being credited. So this would be what, uh, based off of what they provided in the R F P, that April activity looked like. So once you subtract the earnings credit that they would earn or that you would earn, the bottom line would have been four hundred and ninety-eight dollars. So I'm not sure how that would look for Bank of the West and F and M because I didn't see their actual statement. So our cost for April would not have been one thousand one hundred and fourteen. It would have been four hundred and ninety-eight dollars. So that's, I don't, like I said, I don't know if that's the same for the other two. Um, and as far as the LEAF and the minimum, that rate of three point six three was a one-day rate at LEAF. That's not their average rate. Their average rate from two, uh, twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three was only two point one seven. So it wouldn't necessarily be that. That's an estimate based off of three point six three rate, which is not the daily rate for LEAF. Um, and even if it was, they're still ma, you know, you guys are still maintaining that two million average. So I just wanted to correct some things on this report that I felt were a little skewed, um, that weren't accurate to what we saw in the R F P and what we presented. And I appreciate your time and Jeff will have a couple of things to say as well.
Thank you, Stephanie. Well, again, my name's Jeff Alt. I'm regional vice president for West America Bank. My regions, uh, I'm from Bakersfield, from uh Bakersfield up to Modesto. And I think I have the best job in the bank. Um, I get to work with small businesses every day and help them succeed financially as well as work in the communities that we serve. Um, one of the things that I think we need to recognize that's not in any of the results or the R F P and so forth is, again, the fact that we have a branch right across the street. Our Livingston branch here pays seventy-three hundred dollars per year in property taxes. And we're glad to do it. This supports our, your medical services, streets, infrastructures, parks and schools. In addition to that, Merced County, all of our seven branches, we pay roughly around fifty to sixty thousand dollars annually in property taxes. We are the largest F D I C insured bank here in Merced County. We currently have six hundred and forty-three million dollars on deposits in Merced County. We have seven branches that are serving the community here in Merced. And then seventy branches serving Northern California in the Central Valley. We currently employ forty-nine employees in Merced County. And we have eight employees right across the street here that work in this community, spend their money in this community, buy their homes in this community, and they're glad to do it. We also are involved with C R A, as I know that's a hot topic today. Um, we're involved with financial education at the high schools, um, the senior guard, Boys and Girls Club, and Habitat for Humanity, just to name a few of them. In addition to that, we hire local vendors to service our branch, if that's landscaping, uh, folks that come in and do maintenance, um, the cleaning that has to be done daily. All of that money is spent here locally and it turns into tax revenue for the city. Couple of things I'd like to close out on is one, I think as Stephanie mentioned, we'd like to at least be able to compare apples to apples in the R F P. There's been several different statements that have been wrought up, different balances and so forth. And a lot of these things were not indicated in the R F P, that the balances were going to be pulled and put into LEAF and so forth, so that we can have an opportunity to compete with what has been put out there. And that's what we asked, just was for, for a fair opportunity to do so. Secondly, I'd like to address the strength of West America Bank. Um, I'm proud to work for West America Bank. We are a conservative bank, absolutely. But we've been in business for over a hundred years and our liquidity to loan deposits, we're proud of. We don't have to get into a situation where we're worried about our ratios and we have to borrow money from the feds at high interest rates to keep our liquidity ratios in line. And we're proud of that. And by doing so, you can be rest assured that your deposits are safe at West America because we're not going anywhere. We're solid. We're sound. And then lastly, um, again, I know there's been a lot of talk about deadlines. And I know us as a bank at West America, we're very flexible. We can move a deadline anytime we want to and it's very easy. And I'm assuming most banks can do so. But again, we just ask again for an opportunity to have you review that R F P and make sure it's fair and that we have an ample opportunity to compete with what's out there. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Do you guys have any questions for us?
Counsel, are there any questions at this time?
Uh, just, I don't know if it's for you, Happy, or for you. Based on what we have, that, that's saying that if our average minimum deposit goes below two and a half million, just suppose it goes to a million dollars, what would the fees be?
It would depend on what you were using for the month because it's a mul, it's a multi-tiered calculation when you're doing account analysis calculation.
Because earlier you said it would, the fees for April would be around, was it, correct me if wrong, around four hundred and something?
It was four ninety-eight for that particular month.
If, if, if it was two million dollar minimum kept?
Yes.
If that were to drop below that, say a million?
Yeah.
Uh, would it still be four hundred or would it be higher? What would it be then?
It would depend on the activity, but it would go up if it stayed.
I mean, I'm not asking, I'm not asking because the R F Ps are being put in.
Yeah.
Uh, Happy, or somebody, can somebody tell me what might be?
I don't know.
Throw a ballpark finger. No, no idea?
There's no way to tell that without it being calculated.
And that's something we could do and get back to you if it's needed, for sure.
All right.
I can do this, yeah. We have to run the sound for state, so it's always a way to calculate it.
Yeah, the reason I was asking, and we have the treasury report here. It shows that the city has approximately forty million in LEAF investments and looks like a non-interest bearing accounts, which I assume is checking accounts for everyday processing, about balance of around nine hundred thousand, nine hundred and fourteen thousand. It's going to go up every day. Checks come in, money goes, come in and out. So that's why I was asking, what would it be? Would it be all or nothing or is it, you know, is it proportional to the, the average balance?
It would be based off the average by the end of the month. So you can have money going in and out, but at the end of the month, it will average.
Yeah, good.
That's based off of two million being the average.
Yeah, because my bank, and I'm not going to say who it is, because I, I, I've banked with both of you guys, okay? So don't think that I haven't. You know, they're very forgiving, you know? Uh, I, I have been a banker with them for a long, long time and, and checking accounts never hold their balance. I kind of make a guess, I'm going to spend X dollars in a month. You just make sure that it's covered. You know, you're not going to let it go below certain limits because you don't want any alert saying low balance, you know, you don't want to do that. So I was just kind of trying to get that idea and I have no doubt, we have a great finance department. They've already calculated more or less what the total uh, uh, ins and outs going to be in, I know it's already been figured out. So I'm not sure how that, what's our average. It just happens to be for this month or is that the average we keep? Uh, Happy, would you happen to know that? Because according to this treasury report, it says, uh, you know, what we have for the month, right, is nine hundred and fourteen thousand. Is that pretty much where it stays or does it go up quite a?
That's the exact amount at the end of the month.
No, I understand, but that's what, that's what's left over. I get it.
Yes.
But when I get paid the first of the month, I have high balance. On the last day of the month, I'm looking for aluminum cans somewhere, but balance drops. So that's what I'm saying. I, I get it's different, but how do we, how is that done? How's that money?
So basically, the way that we base it on is what's coming in and out of the warrants, what's in the payroll. There's times where I have only three hundred thousand in the bank with F and M Bank and remainder of the money I move over to uh LEAF due to the amount of interest that we receive in LEAF. LEAF is a liquid account where I can call them and say, I need two million next day and they'll give it to me the next day. I can, the next day I can put a million back in there just so the, I guess the best way to earn the city interest is basically cash management. And that's what we do on a daily basis is if we need it, we'll pull it out. If we don't, then I stick it in there.
Yeah, and that's actually good money management and, and I just wanted to know, so basically, when we get warrants, we haven't approved them yet, but you pretty much know what the total warrant is going to be. And you say, if the warrants get approved on this day, like we just did today, well, I better make sure we have money for that. That's how, that's how you base it, right?
The warrants and also the payroll, bi-weekly payroll.
Yeah, I, I get it. I mean, when I say the, not just the warrants because everything, you know, pay, because we count payroll as total balance. We don't look at individual checks, but.
Yes.
Payroll is a total, we see as one big warrant, not necessarily. And the other ones, of course, we see as individually.
So just to maybe add to that, and Happy, maybe you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe your average statement balance is around two million dollars is what we gathered from the R F P. Obviously, it's going to fluctuate up and down during the month, but the average is around two million. And I believe that's what it ran about when we banked with you as well. So that is the number that we use. And if that changes and so forth, that's why we asked. We want to have an opportunity to give you some numbers off of that.
Reason why we kept that much with you guys was to reduce our fees on it. Yes, we should have moved that money out and put into LEAF at that time. Um, I can't speak for management. That was at that time when they were present here, but on my side, now that I'm managing the cash, I don't keep two million with F and M Bank and you can ask, ask him right now. It kind of maybe fluctuates as needed. I've gone as low as two hundred thousand in there, three hundred thousand in there, as much as two million in there in case I need it. If there's big warrants out there, big projects coming out there, so it fluctuates.
Oh, absolutely, okay. No, and that's a good thing. I mean, we're one of seven banks that have a direct relationship with LEAF and so we understand the importance and why it's important to invest with them, so.
That's all I got, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel, other questions? One question. So, and, and, and I'm just, I, I'm just curious. So I see four people here, right? Uh, who was responsible for responding to the R F P? Was, is there, was there one person in particular, a whole team? How, how does that work? I mean, just, just if you can.
We had myself and there's another R S M, regional manager, who was part of it. Um, he's reassigned from this region, so he's not here. But we do have a team, plus we have individuals in our main offices in Fairfield.
And I was included in that as well.
He was also, my apologies, Jeff.
Yeah, we have a team because obviously there's specialties in terms of the different products and we like to bring that, that knowledge into the meetings and help us assist to make sure that we're providing the best service and the pricing available. So yes, we do have a team.
And, and so normally, I mean, we don't get involved in the process, we just wait until, well, we should wait until it comes to us and then, you know, try and figure out and ask all those questions, right? So um, and, and our, on R F P goes out and then you look at what they're, well, in this case, what the city is looking for. Do you have a template that you provide and say, here it is? Or do you look at like each item that we are interested in to have or, or to, a service that we want specifically? And then do you address those items specifically or how does that work on your, on your end?
Yes, we went through it line by line and matched up section by section as we went through it. We have a word processing department who then compiles it. We go back and forth and work with them, but we go line by line. We go back and forth and work with them, but we go line by line.
Okay.
And I was personally involved, yeah.
Okay. All right. Counsel, any other questions? And, I don't know, it was, I think it was 2018, 2019, the last time that, that the city had services with West America Bank. Does anybody remember what was, were the reasons without me going back into the actual video of that day and, and, you know, see what was? I wasn't in the council at that time, so.
Yeah, I was not a region manager then, I was in audit. I was in the audit department, so I wasn't involved. I know that the city left, and I know you brought up a couple of issues that had happened. And that may have been part of it. I don't know if Charlie knew about what happened. Okay.
I was with the bank, but I was in a different area down south, so I was not a part of it either. But that's something, again, we can sure give before you if needed.
And, and I'm not trying, you know, just because I ask those questions or other, other clarifying questions. I mean, that is, that is the good thing about learning from, you know, kind of reflecting on how can we improve and all that.
That's right.
And, and I'm sure that, you know, everybody else has done the same and learned from some of the things that we're missing and stuff like that. What are some of the services that we're, that we need to adapt? And what are some of the services that we're not providing that we need to provide and so on? And so, you know, but, but us up here, we need to kind of ask those hard questions and, and, and consider everything, you know?
That's right.
And so, before we can make our decisions, so.
That's right. And we had a management change from the actual branch manager who was there at the time. And so now Charlie's the branch manager, different region management, and a lot of different things changed. So we've had upgrades to some of our products and services as well. So some of that is probably a lot better, and maybe you wouldn't run into those issues. I know Charlie still comes over and helps the city as much as he can because, well, because he's part of the city. And we're part of the city, regardless of whether you choose to bank with us or not. You know, we're always going to be here, and we're always going to be part of the city and contribute and come to the, you know, the Sweet Potato Festival and things like that. So that's never going to change. You know, we love the city, and we have a business here because of that. And we're not going to change that. You know, we own this building and we're committed to the city. So we hope, we hope it turns out in our favor. And if not, you know, there's no hard feelings. We're still going to be committed to the city and being here. And Charlie will still come over and help out and do what he needs to do. So I, but honestly, I'm sorry, I don't know what happened back then.
And, and honestly, just to be fair and transparent, you know, I did have an opportunity to briefly communicate with two out of the three people in the committee, on the interviewing committee. And, and there were questions or, well, basically is, if, two of the three responses were, it was easier to find the answers than what they were looking for, you know? So, you know, I think it's, it's, I'm not, I'm not saying, you know, I, I don't know how to do banking. I mean, I'm a teacher.
Yeah.
I just deal with 100 kids a day, and that's about it, you know?
Yeah.
You know, so I can work with kids and banking, I just, actually, I don't even, I just, it's just a straight deposit and I just, you know?
The easy way.
Yes, but, so it's just, I like to ask all the questions, and I like to inform and educate myself. And I, and I do want to be able to see the why behind, you know, whoever was more involved and stuff like that, you know?
Yeah.
Whether others do the same, it's, it's, you know, it's, but, but that's what I do. And I'm not in any way saying, you know, one, one thing or the other. But I'm just saying, that's one of the things, and, and I think it's, for, for me, it's just good feedback and, you know?
Absolutely.
And that's, and that's it, you know? And I appreciate, you know, you guys being here, and like, you know, this is like the third or fourth time. And I'm sorry you guys came over last time, and somebody else up here owes you guys a burrito or something, and coffee? You know, but I'm just joking, you know, we, we don't do that. But, you know, I really appreciate everyone being here
Yeah, absolutely.
Tonight, so.
Appreciate it.
I was just going to say thank you for the opportunity. And like I said, however this goes, we're across the street, and we'll take care of whatever you guys need, so thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse me, I just, I just have a question.
I'm, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I, I heard you say at least three times that Charlie comes over to the city, helps out. Can I get some clarification on what that looks like?
Charlie, would you come up?
Also, Charlie, by the way, guys. So a few times I've come over and worked with Happy on certain things. He, he needs change orders, I give him. How many times Happy, do you recall? No? Yeah, so that's, that's one of the things that we're here for still.
Explain, do you know what a change order is? Maybe explain to him what that entails.
Change order, so when you guys are running low on change, and you guys need it, if you guys are not able to get it, it comes from me. And, and then you're asking about helping, so I'm, I'm the new manager now. I've already reached out to your Recreation Department as well, about, letting me know about any event. I was just there on the Sweet Potato Festival, working with four of my staff members. So stuff like that going forward, that's, that's what we're talking about.
Thank you.
Counsel, any other questions before I go? So at this time, I would like to open it again for public comment. And if it's, if it's just regular public comment or citizen comments, or if there are any specific questions to, to either one of the banks here. Go ahead.
Okay, so that we, since we have this thing up here, when there is none, as far as, so there is no borrowing from LEAF for the other two banks, as far as there's no loss of revenue by pulling money out? The $2 million. So that's based off of the $2 million being in there? But you technically have money in the account all the time, correct?
Yes, so basically what that table shows is if we take $2 million out and keep $2 million at West America Bank,
Right.
that's not being invested in LEAF.
Right.
We're potentially losing around $72,000 if I take that $2 million out and put it in LEAF.
So that is, if you, but you're not technically taking $2 million out of LEAF, I mean, holding it out?
No, I'm taking it out of, I don't have to keep it at, at a bank, I'm keeping it in LEAF.
Right.
So if I take it out of LEAF and put it at the bank across the street, then I'll be losing around 72 annually.
If, if it's to $2 million?
Yes.
If it's to, but that's not necessarily?
No, because then that $2 million I can put into LEAF, but then my fees are going to be higher then.
Okay, so the clarification as far as what they were saying is that the fees would have been $400 based on?
Basically, that $1,000 is basically not including what she, as she mentioned, basically.
Okay.
So if we keep the $2 million in there, it'll be lower than that.
Lower than that?
Yes.
Okay, so just so that we have accurate information? So that needs to be taken out?
If we include that rate in there, and then, so if we do the same for the other ones, then basically F and M would probably go down to maybe 200, and then the bank of the West probably go down even lower than that.
Depending, because of what they're doing, $2 million?
No, for the earnings, earnings rate credit.
Earnings rate credit?
Yeah.
So if you have $100,000 in the bank?
Then it'll be higher, we'll get charged more.
You'll be charged more across the board?
Yes.
So in the future, if you're going to do this, is, put some more analysis to it. Because it's hard to, because looking at 72, I understand the simple math, but it's not simple, right? Yeah. And so, because if you had $2 million across the board, all of them would have, I mean, it would be different as far as calculation wise. Is that correct?
But the other two banks aren't requiring that $2 million.
And I'm not saying so that you're comparing apples, if you're comparing apples to apples.
Yes, if we did require that, if we put $2 million, $2 million in both of those,
Right.
then the fees would be lower across the board.
I mean, that's, that's what it should, that's what it should show?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, all right. And so the $72,000 annually, that's holding $2 million across the bank. But technically, for the, what is it normally that you're, on an average monthly deal that you're carrying with F and M?
It just, it just depends. Like, like I mentioned, there's times where I have $300,000 in it, there are times where I have, as, you know, the last report shows, I have almost a million in there, yeah.
Or 2 million.
So it just depends on the warrants and depends on the payroll, and depending on what month it is.
Okay.
Because the warrants are done every weekly. And if it's a payroll month, I mean, a payroll week, then of course I'm going to keep more money in there for all that stuff to go through.
Right. Now, is there a time associated with LEAF as far as pulling money in and out, as far as associated, as far as?
As long as it's done by 10:00 AM.
The next day it's put in?
If I do it by 8:00 AM tomorrow, I'll have $2 million in my, whatever, whatever we decide to move over, it'll have it in my account by the end of the day. If I take money out by 10:00 AM, then by the end of the day, it's in the account or out of our account.
Sounds good, all right, thanks, Happy.
Thank you. Any additional questions or comments in, in the chamber?
Before I say anything else, can I ask, so like, let's just say we decided to move to West America. How much money are we moving from F and M over to West America right now? Like how, what would that look like? No, no, so like, let's just say we decide to bank with West America, and so we're going to be moving money away from F and M, right? Do we know around what that would look like?
No, because basically, it, well, if we did it today, as, as Garpal mentioned in the report, it'd probably be almost about a million dollars.
It'd be about a million.
But that doesn't mean that, that I'm, we're going to keep that $900 million in the bank. So as I mentioned, depends on the warrants and depends on payroll. Some, some, sometimes we have warrants that are high, depending on what projects, projects going on in the city. If there's a big public works, construction project, I need more money in there.
Yeah.
There's times where I pulled $1 million out of LEAF, and there's times where I put in $3 million into, into LEAF.
Okay.
So.
So right now we have about $1 million at F and M?
Yes.
Today?
Yes.
Okay. I'm going to be honest, my notes are very scattered, just because there was a lot that was said, I wanted to wait, but, so just bear with me. I want to be very transparent right off the bat. Charlie, manager at West America, is my older cousin. I'm not here on behalf of him, I'm not here on behalf of West America. My family asked me if I could come talk, and I thought this was super interesting in general, I want to get a little bit more involved in this kind of stuff. I have a paper to write, maybe shouldn't have stayed this late, but we're here now, so I'll be all right. I like the idea, in general, of keeping our money local. I really like that. I think when both beings spoke, I think we went a little bit really off tangent too with some of the things that we were getting into. It almost turned into like a, hey, who's nicer than Livingston contest? Which is great, right? Relationships matter, there's a lot more that goes into what we're doing. But at the end of the day, I feel like it's your job as a council to decide what is best for the city of Livingston, what is the best use of our money. It's not who's invested more, or where it's being invested, or who's working where. All that stuff looks great. Again, relationships are great, but what makes the most sense for the city of Livingston? In terms of numbers, I know some of those calculations would be a little bit different based off of what West America people were saying. But again, across the board, it would be different if you apply that rate everywhere else. I know the city manager had mentioned earlier that the 1.5% rate fluctuates for Bank of the West. Depending on how much fluctuation is there, it looks like we're really looking at what return we're getting. Like, are we not considering that at all? Like, is there that much fluctuation to the point where it's very unstable? Just because if it's, if it's a numbers game only, it looks like they're the best across the board. Now, again, I know there's more that goes into, it doesn't make sense to transition based on deadlines and timelines, right? You guys as a staff know that much better than I do. But if we're playing the numbers game, I feel like, again, numbers wise, it, it looks like they're going to be better across the board. Again, but going back to what I was saying though, I think our community does a great job of being very much about the community. I think most of you, if not all of you, were born here or have lived here for most of your life. That goes for myself, my family, and a lot of the people I know here too. So for that reason, I really like the idea of keeping our money here, if it makes the most sense, if it's the best thing fiscally, right? And for the city. There's another thing that I wanted to kind of bring up that I don't really think anybody's mentioned at all. They kind of touched on it, and I want to go into a little bit more, the whole idea of their liquidity ratio. The bank is very safe, it's not in any danger. Not saying that F and M is not safe, obviously they're a very high performing bank. But we have seen bank runs happen over the past couple of years, obviously very famously with SVB earlier this year. Doesn't mean that it's just going to spontaneously happen to either of our banks. But I think one thing we do have to consider, especially when it comes to banking, is the national economy. And the reason for that is, obviously, we're not in DC right now, right? This is very small compared to that bigger picture. But those things can affect us in very big ways. We saw that with COVID, we see that with inflation, we see that with interest rates. There's a lot of things going on in the economy right now that I think are very concerning. It's almost like a little perfect storm. Student loan repayments are about to restart, we have a lot of workers going on strike. Some of our biggest industries are affected. Almost had a government shutdown, just got averted, but we have a deadline of about another 60 days with a bunch of incompetent people handling it. And we have the Fed saying that they might raise interest rates again. And these are things to consider when, I feel like these are things that we should be considering when we're going into this. How big is that picture going to affect banks like F and M, banks like West America, right? Are we, is there any potential of bank runs? Is there any potential of losses, right, with these industries? Because at the end of the day, they have a job to prioritize their shareholders and their profit over anything else. And in that situation, I really like the idea of a safe bank in town that's going to be here no matter what for the residents. Like, Mr. Summer had mentioned earlier, we have a lot of people who walk to the bank to go get their social security payments, don't have vehicles, et cetera, in a situation of an emergency. Really, really like the idea of empowering our local bank. Like Mr. from F and M mentioned, they're worth multiple billions of dollars. I think they're going to be just fine unless something drastic happens. And in the case of anything drastic that may happen at any point over time, I really like the idea of our money being here. Very convenient, literally right there. And I, I think that would be a great move if it's best for the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any additional citizen comments in the chamber? Okay, I'm going for anybody on the phone, any additional comments in regards to this item? Okay, hearing none, so at this time, I'm bringing it back to the dais. Counsel?
Mr. Mayor, for the comment, please, now that both of the banks have stated their comments. If we were to strictly look at the numbers, one of them sticks all their better than the other. But many jurisdictions, not only Livingston, other municipalities, they have always, a lot of them have considered awarding contracts, services, different things, and giving extra points for someone that's a local bank, a local business. So a contractor from Fresno can bid maybe a little lower than a contractor from Livingston, but because Livingston, it's a contractor business located in town, they get extra points that have to help off some of the cost. So they do that to promote local businesses, local services. Because everywhere we look, we see signs, shop local, don't shop Amazon, shop local, shop local, create jobs, do this. And shouldn't we also be doing that? Hilmar, you know, I get it. I know that you mentioned three people working for F and M from Livingston. I know AJ, of course. But I'm willing to, I don't know, I can't speak, and I'm not going to bring them up anymore, but I'm kind of willing to bet that there's also people that work at their branches, probably from Livingston too, for other branches too, other banks. So it's not, I get it, people make calls all the time to do what's best for them. And, and I do that, but I also want the council to consider how others have given extra credits to local businesses, and we should also do the same. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Counsel, any other questions at this time?
To Garpal's point, when this first took place, when the, the banking services, back then, based on what I knew, I did have a vote to keep West America, okay? Based on the fact that, keep it local, you know, we want our bank local. I have family that, that banks with West America, but I don't belong to West America. Or F and M. I wouldn't be on the dais if I belonged to either one of you, so, I mean, not on the dais, but I would not, I would have recused myself. So with that even being said, us as a council, we're, we are not utilizing either of your services personally. Keeping our dollars local, we've seen what has been said to the gentleman that came up. You know, it's important that you are invested in our community. People choose where they want to work, choose, people choose where they want to bank for certain reasons. Tonight's presentation? Um, tonight's presentation, the staff of Livingston did provide us with information. Um, it was clarified even more so, um, between, uh, the banking, the banks that are, are present tonight. So it did makes, it does make sense to keep, you know, um, money local. But I do see your point, you know, our, our taxes, you're, you're paying, you know, the taxes here. But there are other, um, services that F and M is, is providing, and the numbers reflect, um, positively. I mean, on both your parts, but more so for our, our current services. So with that being said, I wanna go ahead and, and approve the recommendation and, and resolutions as provided for F and M Bank.
Thank you for your comments and your motion. Um, before I move forward, I'd like to just add some additional comments. So you, you did make a motion, right?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. So, well, first of all, I really, I, I, I wanna take a moment to, to thank everyone that has been participating, you know, from staff, from different people, from the three different agencies, three different banks, people out in the community, uh, people calling in. Um, you know, just everyone involved, and I know that, 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 uh, there was, there was a long, it was a long process, because we wanna make sure that it's, we're not doing something just too fast and just not doing things right. You know, ideally, it's, it's when we, well, a lot of times when things are done too fast, and it's, things, there's always something that we're missing. And, and we have found ourselves in those situations, you know, uh, for the last six, seven months, trying to make corrections of a lot of those little things. So to staff, I, I wanna say thank you. Uh, I, and I apologize if I sent too many emails at two, three o'clock in the morning. You know, sometimes I cannot sleep, and it just, just might as well send it now, and I'm, and I'm hoping that you, you'll see it in the morning. But sometimes, very rarely do I get a response right there and then, but, you know, just disregard the time that I send those out. And to people out in the community, uh, um, you know, that have reached out, have shared their, their peace of mind, and their ideas. You know, so I, and this is how, this is part of the process, you know, and, and so I really appreciate it. So, um, yeah, yes. Sure, go ahead.
To both parties, I wanna say thank you. Uh, Mr. Anderson, nothing personal, you know, just opinions, so. And I wanna say thank you to Happy and all staff that participated in this, uh, I appreciate everything you do.
Thank you. And so, you know, just, just a couple of things that I want to, um, reiterate in some of those, some of the things that were said by, by others, and, um, we, I don't believe, at least when, uh, I think it was May second, when it was asked to staff uh, by the majority of this council, not, not by unanimous decision, but just as a request to, 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 to bring this item uh, to the council, it was, I, I think it was three, uh, and at that time. And, uh, so it's not that I, at least to my knowledge, to my knowledge, we had no issues at that time with our current services. It was just a wish by the majority of the council that was initiated to bring this item to council. So it's not that we had any issues. Uh, also, just a reminder that, that, uh, currently, we have services guaranteed until November eleventh. Uh, and that there is a transition period of time, whether it is four weeks, I hear, you know, I heard anything from four weeks, six, eight, up to twelve weeks. Uh, and that only, that also involves staff time, you know, taking staff away from the other priorities that we, this council has given them to work on. And, and focus on, on other issues that, on something that, uh, we, to try and fix something that wasn't broken. I'm just trying to look at my notes. And, you know, just to go back to, uh, one of, one of the previous citizen comments, you know. Uh, and to analyze and to make decisions based on what we think what is best for the city of Livingston. Not what is best for, for, you know, a, for anyone in particular, or at least what we think would be best for the majority of, uh, in this case, for the city of Livingston, and how we can best, uh, use those funds accordingly, and, 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 and obviously save money and all that. So, um, and then, just a reminder that, that if, if once this, there, there's a motion on the floor. And once, if there's a second, and if there is a, a two to two, then this doesn't go anywhere. Then we have to figure out again, and, and then just the, the clock is ticking, okay? So also, this item says, resolution approving a contract with F and M Bank for banking services or alternative council direction. Which could mean, I do believe that this current, or the, well, our current services are to expire on November eleventh, but the, the previous, the previous, uh, five, I think it was four or five year contract was to expire November.
Twenty twenty-four.
November twenty twenty-four.
Yeah, I don't know the exact month, but it is twenty twenty-four, the end of twenty twenty-four.
So, which would give this council, you know, uh, more time, if needed, if desired, to, to figure something out where it's not going to affect the city at all. I'm sure everybody wants to get paid, especially the employees, and we, we want to make sure that they get paid. I, I, I see somebody back there trying, scratching their heads, like, am I getting paid? Just kidding. But anyways, so, uh, any additional comments before we move with the motion? So there's a motion on the floor.
So there is a motion on the floor.
Yes.
And I just wanna reiterate that, the driving force between, behind the May second decision was because, um, Garpal was not happy that, um, F and M Bank, that was the question. I think that could have been resolved by simply reaching out to F and M and asking them, hey, where's our bank? Um, or can, let's, let's work together here and figure out, you know, this building is already occupied, that would have been ideal. And just hearing you out first, um, before we made the decision of saying, okay, cease all this and that, go out for RFP. But that's what we did, we are here now, and it would be very disappointing that we don't come to a decision as simple as it has been presented to us tonight with the information that we have before us. If we can't make a decision on banking services tonight, and we come to this two-two, I am, we need to do better, we need to do better for the city, for our residents, um, our staff. A decision has to be reached. So, like I said, May second, we could have, but made it simpler by reaching out and asking where is our bank? Because that was the driving force leading us to this point, saying, F and M promised, you know, and that was, that was the, um, that was the, I, I, I wanna say I do believe that that was the reason why this RFP was sent out, was because we wanted to change, well, we didn't wanna want to change. But we wanted to know, where is our bank? They made a promise to, to Garpal. And we heard from the last council meeting that, that wasn't quite accurate. Um, so, again, I want to go ahead and continue with the motion.
All right, so we have a motion on the floor, is there a second? I'll go ahead and second that. Roll call, please, so first, first by Ms. Soto, second by myself.
Roll call, Councilmember Roth.
Yes.
Councilmember Soto?
Yes.
Mayor for Tim Semra?
No.
Mayor Moran?
Yes.
Motion approved by a vote of three, one.
Thank you. Uh, next item, we have council direction on, on future agenda items, council, are there, is there anything for future agenda items?
I just have a few. Um, I'd like to see if we could put a workshop in regards to, um, general plan having a community involvement. Because we do, this has been ongoing, um, since two thousand eight, we're operating off a general plan that is not updated. And getting behind updating master plans, um, making policies that we, uh, going forward with some of the policies, reviewing those, and I don't know where we are with that, so I'd like an update, but I'd also like to see that as a priority. And it's been a long while since I've seen a report from HDL in regards to, um, the taxes that are being generated. We used to get a, a flyer, I think quarterly is when they would have those, and I haven't seen one quite a long time. Um, so in order for us to make those decisions moving forward with general plan, taxes, all of that, we need to have some updated information. I also, Julio already left, um, missed opportunity, but I did receive a phone call from a representative from Paul Mauer Shows, he wants to know where we are with the Fourth of July. Um, and I don't know how to respond to that, because I do know that, that I had made a recommendation to put ad hoc, because eventually that type of, uh, festival or, and festivities is going to have to come before the council. So I'd like to see that we do have a, uh, that put in, because the carnival show would really like to, um, work with us for next year. Also, I'd like some clarity, I did receive an email from a, a resident. I know we had this back in, uh, maybe two years ago, or maybe just even last year, probably about this time, um, last year, about naming streets. I had someone reach out to me and want to know about naming streets. Um, so if we can get some clarity on how we would do that, I know that when we develop in other areas, that, that is something that they work with, with the developers. But if I could have a, a clear response, that way I can reach out and say, you know, we're gonna look into it. Also, I was wanted to know, um, on the agenda, we still have that spot open for a board of supervisor. If we can have that, and I don't know how legally appropriate the structure is on the agenda for that. But I'd rather see that we open it up to all county supervisors rather than, say, name specific, because we hold that spot, and for whatever reason, we don't get a report. Last night, I did attend the, um, Merced City Council, because they did a, an award for the Merced County Hispanic Chamber of Commerce. Um, and there were other county supervisors there other than those that represent that district. So if that could be discussed, um, on the agenda, or even how legally appropriate it is, to have a, a, a spot reserved. And if it is reserved, then we need to open it up to all county supervisors, not just one specific. Also, we had the proclamation tonight. Um, I'd like to see that maybe, well, I'd like to see that the next council meeting, that we do, um, bring awareness. Um, I, I am wearing my city of Livingston, uh, breast cancer, it was offered to the city last year. So it is Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Somebody, you know, there can be a presentation, I would do it myself, adding some, some data to it, and also some data on, um, domestic violence. You know, these are some areas that people don't like to talk about, um, in public. But these do happen to our families, cancer and domestic violence. So if we can per, put out the proclamation and, and bring everybody to issues that affect our community. And maybe one last thing, we did just have the Sweet Potato Festival. Um, I would like to see, and I know that this happened prior to me being on council, was that a motto was approved. Um, currently, our motto is, you know, we're the last stop. For the reasons that we did have a stoplight here, that has been a very long time, when people look us up, they wonder why we are the last stop. We should be the first stop, correct? We, everyone should wanna, you know, come visit us and, and stay here and see what Livingston's all about. Um, but the city motto that was approved way back when, if we wanna go back and look to that city council meeting, I believe it was like in two thousand seventeen. It was Livingston, California, the sweet potato capital of the world. Okay, we just had the Sweet Potato Festival, we are not honoring it with the way that our council back then voted on. So that is our city motto, we have artwork in the uh, room over there in City Hall, the conference room, that has artwork from students that competed to make a new logo. So if that could be put on the agenda, and we, we revisit that, because that is our city motto, the sweet potato capital of the world. And if we're holding sweet potato festivals and everybody's enjoying it and loving it, we wanna recognize that, uh, we are definitely, in fact, the sweet potato capital of the world. So, thank you so much, I hope to see that these, uh, items are on the agenda, because usually, they're not when I ask, but, you know, I get it.
Anybody else? Okay, uh, meeting adjourned at nine thirty. Good night.